Gentlemen, classes, ladies and gentlemen, I am the Mayor of the City of Clarence on the day of the election. Good evening, everyone, thank you. The proceedings are not recording, we're ready to decide for council prayer. First prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee with our slave-bought blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge that many in that regional community, as seen from the custody, are meeting on the same space that was passed in print. Remind everyone...
Item one apologies, Alderman Campbell is on move and the rest of us present. Item two is confirmation of minutes for 3rd of July as circulated. Alderman Cusick, Pete's, Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Under item three, I'd like to table the report into the Clarence City Council visit to Binjau City from the 10th to 13th of May. There are a number of, apart from reporting on the visit itself, there are some recommendations in there which I won't go into in detail right now, but it is being tabled and I'm happy to take, it will be also attached to the minutes of this meeting, but I'm happy to take any questions of a broad nature right now.
I was just wondering if the report provides any recommendations in terms of, I think, or something council should consider, which is membership of the Australia-China Business Council. Whether it does or doesn't, I think it's something the council should explore.
Thanks very much, Alderman here, my call, General Manager.
Three, Mr Mayor, the report in itself doesn't have that recommendation, but I imagine that the next council meeting, some of the recommendations will have to come, out of the report, will have to come back to council for consideration. I'll make sure that that issue is picked up at that point in time for consideration.
Mr Mayor, is it possible for those who would like a hard copy of that to be made available to them?
Three, Mr Mayor, it will be incorporated in the minutes, but we can make a hard copy, hard copies available probably towards the end of the week, but we can make them available.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on to item four, the council notes the workshop's conducted on the 10th and 17th of July, and the agenda briefing on the 21st of July. Thanks, Alderman Pierce, second, Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate. Alderman Pierce.
Here, Mayor, in closed meeting, as it's to deal with Bayfield Street's streetscape, 13.3 article.
Yes. Thank you, Alderman Pierce. And, General Manager.
Mayor, I've declared an interest in the Queen Street item, and I'm just struggling to find which, it's one of the planning items, and it's 11.3...
11.7.
3.7, sorry.
11.3, yes. Okay. Any other declarations of interest? Thank you. There are no petitions to be tabled from the agenda, are there any from the four? Thank you. Item seven, public question time, 7.1 is two questions on notice from Mr Ray Leonard. General Manager, are you able to address those and move on to item 7.2, answers to questions on notice?
Oh, sorry. Good early there, Mr Mayor, thank you. Yes, the two questions are printed there in the agenda, so I won't go through reading them, but in response to those questions, in response to question one, the hardstand facility will be available for all users. The hardstand facility has been broken down into two stages. One, the skate park for skateboarders, cyclists and swimmers, and stage two will comprise the basketball court and tennis sitting wall. In relation to question two, there was an extensive community consultation process undertaken for the draft South Arm master plan, with significant response from residents. Council sought to consider all issues and matters voiced by the public and take them into account. The feedback was used to develop the final South Arm oval master plan. Mr Mayor, the quest answers given tonight will also be provided in writing this week to the gentleman that asked the question.
Thank you. Item 7.3, answers to previous questions on notice, there's nothing there, and item 7.4, public questions without notice, are there any questions from members of the public that noticed? Yes. Please, come forward. If you could state your name and address, please, before posing a question.
Michael Geady, 53 Cambridge Road.
Thank you.
Mr Mayor, just in regard to the article in the Eastern Shore Sun last week, you said that there would be similar height to other buildings in Belray Village to the 22 metre hotel and the 20 metre hospitality school. Could you name which buildings you were referring to?
Certainly, 14 to 22 Cambridge Road. 14 to 22 Cambridge Road. Do you have another question?
Yeah, if that's the units in the Belray Village, they're only 13.79. Do you still contend that 13.79 is the same as 20?
What I'll undertake to do is get the exact height for you, and I'll write your letter to that effect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? We can allow a sec, yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Given that you have previously defended the...
Name and address, sorry.
Oh, Sachi Yasuda, Melana Road, Lindisfarne.
Thank you.
Given that you have previously defended the council's decision to approve Shambrooth Kangaroo Bay development by saying costs will be offset partly through the sale of public land, including former crown land gifted by Will Hodgman's Liberal Government, do you believe that failing to disclose the sale price by hiding behind commercial in confidence has further eroded community trust in the council, and do you have any intention of disclosing the sale price at any time?
Well, I'll ask the General Manager about the proprietary of disclosing commercial in confidence information, and whether it's possible that in time that price becomes available.
Three, Mr Mayor, council could elect to disclose that information, but it would require a formal motion to council to do so, given that that matter, quite rightly at the time, was considered in closed meeting of council, but council can elect at any time to bring a matter out of closed meeting.
Thank you.
So, just as a follow-up, then, would council be open to considering a motion to disclosing that?
Well, I need to take that on notice, because clearly I can't make a decision on behalf of the whole council without giving them opportunity to make that decision.
Would you be prepared to put that in writing to me as well?
Absolutely, well, I'll advise you that, the answer that we just provided.
Yep, just if there's any follow-up as well.
Certainly, the letter I write to you with that answer will advise.
Terrific, thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the public? Mr Geady, I can allow a second go of the cherry?
Michael Geady, same address as before. In the same article, it also says that the hospitality training school will be 17.6 metres tall on the Kangaroo Bay side. Has there been a variation lodged because that building is 20.02?
I'm not aware of any variation being lodged, do you, General Manager?
No, no.
So, that's incorrect information that council have given to...
Look, I'll take that on notice and include a response to that in the letter I get back to you with. Are there any other questions from members of the public? Look, I'm sorry, I can only allow two under meeting regs. If you've got any other questions, if you could, please let us know, and I'm very happy to get back to you and write a response. Thank you very much. Item eight, deputations by members of the public, I think we have five speakers. I need to remind speakers that under those meeting regulations again, we can only permit three minutes, and there will be a tone of two and a half minutes to let you know that there's 30 seconds to wind up. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have a number of speakers this evening. First speaker I have, Mr Greg Casamati of Acton Park, he wishes to address council in relation to item 11.3.1, a development application at 13 Surf Road. Sorry, Greg, I can see you up there.
Good evening, my name's Greg Casamati. I put a DA in at number 13 Surf Road at Sevmore Beach, and had one representation. We all know that representations have to have merits, and I don't believe that this one did so considering that the council staff have recommended it for approval. I think I just wanted to point out that I tried, in all good faith, to come to an understanding with the next-door neighbours, it failed, and I think it's a little bit hypocritical that what they can represent it about, about me having my new proposed garage on their boundary when theirs is on mine. So, I just, if you went to page 58 of the agenda, attachment two, it will show that their garage is on my boundary at the back, on the northern side, which blocks the sun in my entire backyard, and mine doesn't have any consequence on theirs, apart from overshadowing at 3 o'clock on the 25th of June across their driveway. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Casamati.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Brett Morris of Sevmore Beach, he wishes to address council in respect of the same matter.
My name is Brett Morris, I'm from Lindisfarne. The residents at 15 Surf Road who are currently interstate have asked me to speak on their behalf about the grave concerns they share relative to a large construction of a 10 metre garage on their boundary line. As in regulations for village zoning, the requirement is a two metre setback, and as a proposal is to be built on the boundary line, the objection is visual impact, there'll also be obviously overhang and noise concerns. The initial proposal shows a sympathetic covering for the two sides facing both the main dwelling and Surf Road, but on the side facing and against the boundary of number 15, the plan shows concrete blocks which are not in keeping with, nor sympathetic to the property at number 15, nor neighbouring properties and the street view. The garage proposal is placed to be on the adjoining boundary, and as such would supersede the existing fence line, which would be well in excess of the fence height of 2.1 for village zoning. It would give essentially number 15 a fence line of 1.8, which is their existing height, then a fence line of 2.4 for 10 metres, then again dropping to 1.8 to the street boundary. The current location of the car parking under the house roof at number 13 leads straight from the driveway from Surf Road. There is ample development opportunity for a garage to be built on that side of the block, and still remain within boundary setbacks without negative impact on neighbours' property of all Surf Road. The proposed garage will be highly visible from frequently used front open spaces of number 15. It will also be visible from all front windows of the main sitting area inside, and be prominent from the front driveway and entrance from Surf Road. Finally, I have some photographs that I should like to hand around, if you're comfortable for me to do so.
Mr Vanderheek, if you could take those and circulate the photos, please.
Thank you. These photos give a view of the proposed impact of the garage against this property. We'd like to thank you for your time, thank you.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Julia Belova of Rose Bay, he wishes to address council in relation to a DA at Board to 6 Chatsworth Street, Rose Bay. No, withdrawn, thank you. We'll move to Dr Robert Scott of Rose Bay, he wishes to address council also in respect of a proposed DA at Board to 6 Chatsworth Streets.
My name is Robert Scott, and my wife and I have lived at 91 Espinard, Rose Bay for over 18 years, and we have three school-aged children. Tonight, I wish to voice our objections to the development application for 4 and 6 Chatsworth Street on land adjoining our property. Despite exceeding the building envelope in numerous places, the planning authority has exercised its discretionary power and recommended approval of the development. I believe that the authority is heard in its advice to council by significantly underestimating the apparent heights of the buildings when viewed from neighbouring properties, by not considering, or not properly considering, the combined bulk of the four units which appear as a single enormous structure when viewed from many positions, including our property, by not paying due regard to the loss of amenity and privacy on neighbouring properties, and by using a narrow interpretation of the term 'overshadowed' instead of its more general meaning 'to tower above'. Breaches of the building envelope occur across the entire footprint of the proposed development. Alderman hardly need be reminded that this is a new, and in comparison to its predecessors, very generous building envelope which far exceeds the size of all neighbouring dwellings. The combined bulk of the four three-storey units is out of all proportion to the 26 existing residences on this suburban block. The developer argues that many of the neighbouring lots have a significant slope towards the river, giving a terraced effect where one dwelling looks over the roof of another. They imply that this will be true once their units are built. However, this argument only holds when buildings are of similar height and spacing, and on uniformly sloping ground. The proposed development raises the average roofline by at least a full story, and I'm sure we've all had the experience of finding ourselves seated behind a much taller person at the cinema or theatre. So much for the terraced effect. Many of our neighbours could be forgiven for thinking that they are soon to be seated behind the housing equivalent of the Hobart Chargers' basketball team. We're told that none of us owns a view, however, the interim planning scheme stipulates the sighting and scale of a dwelling must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity on adjoining properties. Amenity is the attractiveness, desirability, or useful features of a building or place. Thus, it is very hard to argue that having every inch of your formerly private back garden overlooked by adjoining properties from multiple levels and vantage points, or having your present panoramic views across the derwent replaced by a three-storey high wall constructed metres from your fence line, is anything other than a gross loss of amenity. So, in closing, I would like to sincerely thank those Aldermen who have given up their time to meet with us in the weeks preceding tonight's meeting, who have listened to our concerns, and seen for themselves how great the detrimental impacts of this development would be on our lives, and those of our neighbours, if approved, I hope council votes to reject the application.
Sorry, next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Mr James McElhenney of Rose Bay, who also wishes to reverse council in respect of this matter.
Thank you, James McElhenney, from 29 Marana Avenue in Rose Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in relation to the application for four multiple dwellings at 4 and 6 Chatsworth Street. It's my opinion that the application should be refused, as it does not comply with the planning scheme standard in relation to the permitted building envelope. It only takes non-compliance with one planning scheme standard for an application to be refused, with the recent Benestreet Appeal decision being example of this. The proposal does not meet the building envelope acceptable solution, as none of the proposed dwellings are contained within the prescribed building envelope. The development must therefore be assessed against the performance criteria. The performance criteria requires that the sighting and scale of a dwelling must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity due to visual impacts caused by the apparent scale, bulk, or proportions of the dwelling when viewed from adjoining lot. The four dwellings do not comply with this performance criteria, as they will cause unreasonable loss of amenity by creating a significant visual impact due to the apparent scale, bulk, and proportions of the proposed dwellings, particularly when viewed from the adjoining lots at 29 and 31 Marana Avenue, 2, 4, and 8 Chatsworth Street, and 90 and 91 Espinard. The four units will have the appearance of three-storey buildings when viewed from many of the adjoining lots. This is not consistent with the scale, bulk, massing, and proportions of dwellings in the surrounding area. The predominant pattern of developments in the street block contained within Chatsworth, Topham, Yola Street, and Marana Avenue, and the Espinard is of single and double-storey dwellings. The planning scheme allows council to consider the relevant objective in an applicable standard to help determine whether a development complies with the performance criteria for that standard. One of the objectives of the building envelope standard is to control the sighting and scale of dwellings to provide consistency in the apparent scale of massing and proportion of It is difficult to see how four three-storey dwellings in the middle of the street block containing one and two-storey dwellings meets this objective. The planning report before you is deficient in that it does not address the issue of consistency in the apparent scale, bulk, massing, and proportion of dwellings. The objective for the building envelope standard is not referenced in the report. It should be noted that even a small projection from the building envelope requires the whole dwelling to meet the performance criteria. The reason that all of the dwellings project outside the building envelope is their considerable size, ranging from 200 to 267 square metres, containing three bedrooms, double garage, home office, walk-in pantry, walk-in wardrobes, and lifts.
I'll have to call it there, I'm afraid, but I think we've picked up the drift of where you're going on, mate. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, 9.1 is a notice of motion, Alderman Chong. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Cusick, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, this is a first step in a proactive work, if you like, at the recreational needs in Clarence. Many of our sporting groups are looking for expanded facilities, and we currently have no up-to-date plan that considers what could be needed, and who might fund any of these increased facilities. With Sevmore Beach precinct already being considered, it's important that we have a real handle on what facilities might need to be offered in the future, and where they might be. This report just scopes out a recreational needs analysis, and will look at how we go about updating our current report, and ensuring that we can get the best information for all the needs in the future. And just to allay any fears, this will be an in-house review, and there'll be no budget implication at this stage.
Cusick?
As Alderman Chong said, there are lots of requests, we need to be able to prioritise these, as to the need, and have a gun to fund them, and get some order about this.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, Mr Mayor, perhaps in the Alderman Chong's right of reply, she could collaborate on the timeframe of this, because it just seems as though two months to do a strategic plan of recreation needs throughout the city is a huge task, and I'm just wondering as to whether or not there has been given some consideration to staff time, as well as the in-detail approach that would be required in order to achieve this fairly lengthy, I would have thought, and detailed account of the recreation needs in the city.
Other speakers? Alderman Pierce?
Mayor, I do agree with the Alderman Chong's motion, and I'm just wondering, my question, I was going to ask it later, but I must ask it now. We're doing master plans of many sporting facilities, but I've heard nothing, when are they coming to council? Because this may answer some of these questions. Heard them being done, but that's where it sort of starts.
Grant?
Excuse me, I'm carrying a master plan, we're working on intensive sporting activities in Acton Park, and in council there's hundreds of matches here.
Because we're looking at recreational facilities, and a lot more women now are playing different sports, which they wouldn't have done so many years ago, I may pass this Alderman Chong in her reply, but while we're looking at recreational needs, we do need to look at change rates as well for females, so will this be a part of that?
Other speakers? Alderman Chong, write a reply, oh, sorry, Alderman Walker?
Yes, I won't be long, Mr Mayor. This is welcomed, and part of that is around the fact that there's a almost infinite number of requests for different recreational activities, pursuits, infrastructure, and finite amount of funding for them. So, there are opportunity costs when you put one against another. Some activities are for one gender overwhelmingly compared to another, and for a snapshot in the continuum of life, perhaps 15 to 25, others, three through to 96. Another matters around recreation, we look at the opening of new playgrounds, and see the uptake in the activity and the return on investment there. So, the fact that this puts, again, more science and rigor around it is to be welcomed. Support the motion.
And just to make a note, Mr Mayor, that over the last 10 years or so, the consultation for the strategic plan has often brought on board comments from the community, and I would hope that they would be researched and implemented in the new strategy. I was just going to say that as long as this doesn't cause any duplication of time and commitment, that's fine. Also, that's recreation, when we talk about recreation, we're talking about active recreation as opposed to passive recreation, so it covers a whole multitude of areas. The open space strategy, I think, needs to be completed, and then we can actually put things in context. So, that's my only concern, that we are trying to consider a few considerations at the one time, when we need to get in our heads the open space strategy, because that's a slightly different context again, but it embraces all of that. So, that's my only concern.
Other speakers? There's a bit there, Alderman Chong, write a reply.
Certainly, and I guess in reverse order, if you like, part of the reason for starting to look at this now, and to answer Alderman's earlier issue, is that because we're about to look at the open space strategy, which deals a lot with the more passive recreation, it's actually a good time to start thinking about the other recreational needs, so that we get an overall picture of what we need, rather than try and do bits in isolation, if you like. To come back to Alderman Pierce's point, yes, definitely recreational needs include all sorts of facilities, and the required, changing requirements for changing rooms, particularly with more women playing soccer and ASL, and more men playing netball, all of those need to be put into the mix. And to come back to Alderman James, this actually isn't the recreational needs analysis. I would expect that to take quite a bit more than too much. This is just a study to look at what needs to be included, that's a scope out, if you like, so that we can look at the process that we do it in, what we would include, and how we would go about doing an analysis for the up-to-date requirements. I see council support.
The motion is as put forward by Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 10, reports from outside bodies, 10.1 is the quarterly report ending 30th of June... Item ten, reports from outside bodies. Ten point one is the quarterly report ending thirtieth of June for Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, and the motion is to be received. Thank you, Alderman Chong, second of Alderman Hume. Any questions on the STCA report? Okay, so I'll put the motion-
Sorry, just, the mayor was reported, or the Lord Mayor, I should say, has been reported that STCA has supported a lot of things recently and was pretty much on the same page around issues, including UTAS, and that we are fully supportive of their project and what they're doing within town. So there's a little element of paraphrasing what I'm saying, but not much. Can you tell me, Mr. Mayor, at what point did we endorse the UTAS strategy in town?
Well, Clarence City Council hasn't, there's no question about that, but Southern Tasmanian Council's authority has their support to the STEM project and is supportive of the city's deal because it sees merit for the whole region.
I understand that there's merit in the concept around a city day. Again, just there's an issue that because something's said by the STCA that it's automatically an endorsement, ringingly by each council, is a disconnect and a cause of potential friction.
I certainly take that on board, and as one wearing two hats, I have to be very careful with what I say with each hat, so it's a point well taken. Alderman Farne?
Page six, item four, planning reform update. It speaks about a technical reference group comprising a planning officers from each of the councils to consider the preparation of the LPS. When will we be having a workshop on that?
Well, I think the General Manager actually chairs that working group, so am I-
No, I don't, but I do report.
Okay.
Yeah. I am the conduit for it, back to the STCA. We'll be having a series of workshops in relation to the preparation of our local LPS. Yeah, the local-
Planning provision.
Yeah, STEM. I think probably, I think we've got the first one scheduled for about four weeks' time. We've just got to wait till we get to a certain development of content that we've got something worthwhile to put before council. So there is, I know that the staff are working progressively on that, but I think we have schedules for about four weeks' time for first workshop.
The other points? In that case, the motion is that the STCA report be received. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. The next item is the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority. I don't know if you as proxy Alderman Walker are in a position to have, or whether you have anything to report or not? Yeah, the quarterly report is pending, so that- Tasmanian Water Corporation, I can report that there's a briefing to the owners' reps, quarterly briefing on the eighth of August, and clearly there's a lot of action happening in that space, so I'll report back after that meeting. Item ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. First one is that we receive the endorsed projects to audit committee. Alderman Chong or Alderman Cusick?
I'll take it.
So move to Alderman Cusick, second of Alderman Chong?
Which ever works.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to it at all? Thank you.
I'd just like to note that we've got a, we as council got a very positive report on our management of strategic risk and risk management framework. Few enhancements suggested, but actually we got a very good report on that project. And hopefully the five projects that are suggested for the audit panel for next year are endorsed.
Alderman Von Berto?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that one of the projects for next year, climate change, very pertinent and very important, so I would certainly be supporting that one.
Other speakers? Okay, I'll put the motion in that the report be received and we endorse the audit projects for the coming year. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Next item is the tracks and trails, that chairman's report be received. Alderman Hume?
Oh, no, you didn't call for other reports?
Not yet, no.
Oh, sorry.
We've got to work through the tracks and trails and the bicycle steering committee, but you'll be first cab off the rank when we get to it. Tracks and trails, chairman's report be received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and if I could seek-
If we could have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Cusick.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, and I've tried to find out the timeframe with respect to the Brinktop track in Richmond. In our report, or the report of the committee, the track along Brinktop Road will be handed over to council when the subdivision is complete. Would Mr. Lovell be able to advise council when, in fact, that subdivision will be ticked off and we can basically take it over and obviously start to up the size of the track to Brinktop lookout? Please.
Lovell, are you able to assist on this?
No, I'm not.
Okay, perhaps a note to the weekly briefing report, please? Thank you. Any other? Put the motion in that the chairman's report be received. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. And bicycle steering committee? I can't wait to see what this is all about. Move Alderman Von Berto, seconded. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Any speakers on the bicycle steering committee report? Okay, so put motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Alderman Hume?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was going to miss the phone. Business eight, Board of Management, Minister.
Thank you. Alderman Thirley?
Monthly meeting minutes for Bell Reef Community Act.
Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor, the minutes of the Government of the State Community Arts Centre for July.
Reports? Item eleven point one, that the information in the weekly briefing reports of the third, tenth and seventeenth of July be noted. Thanks, Alderman Thirley. Second of Alderman Pearce. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions in relation to the weekly briefing report of the tenth of July. Firstly, it deals with a question on One Tunnel Street. My question through you to Mr. Graham in his capacity as the acting manager of asset management. Mr. Graham, the notification of the, a report is attached in the weekly briefing report. Can you provide council with a timeline when that tree will be removed, please?
And Alderman James?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the matter of the planning appeal decision versus Sixth Venice Street. My question through you to Mr. Lovell in his capacity as, well, I always call him the chief planner, but, Mr. Lovell, the decision of Sixth Venice Street and also to Lovell versus the Georgetown Council, which were interlocked and very closely related in the decision that the planning appeal tribunal made and in support of council's recommendation not to approve that particular development. In your capacity as manager of that department, would you agree that we now have a precedent set which in essence would be taken by the tribunal in consideration of any other like-for-like sort of proposal that would come before the tribunal in that particular case? If through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lovell could provide that information as to whether or not firstly a precedent has been set for like-for-like in the circumstances that occurred in Lovell and also in the Venice Street development? Lovell?
Yes, I think if it's at a different position, we're generally be wise to-
Second question, did you?
That was the second.
Okay.
The other one was in relation to-
Of course. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Alderman Hume?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the seventeenth of July briefing report. There was a, we received a memo in relation to the South Arm Skate Park, which is now going to come back to a council workshop following acoustic, testing by, noise testing by acoustic consultant. I was just wondering what's prompted, looking at that, what the concerns are. I understand we'll get more information at the workshop, but I think it'd be-
And through him, Mr. Mayor, you proposed bringing it back to a workshop. I think the concern, the reason we're coming back to a workshop is the noise consultant recommended the construction of an acoustic wall, and we want to discuss with council the appropriateness of building an acoustic wall and/or whether there's a better, some better opportunities in relation to the construction of the skate park.
There being no further questions, the motion is that the information in the report be noted. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point two, there's nothing to report, so advise that council now intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. First item, eleven point three point one, is a development application at thirteen Surf Road, Seven Mile Beach, addition to dwelling and outbuildings. Move Alderman Farne, second of Alderman Walker. Alderman Farne, would you like to speak to it?
Remove the on-site recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, I didn't want the recommendation.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
I have a question firstly, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Lovell. Mr. Lovell, it was stated by the represent, oh, where is he? Over here. I'm in the habit of looking that way, and anyway. Over to Mr. Lovell. Mr. Lovell, it was mentioned in the representative's introduction and comment earlier this evening that there was a building height that would in fact be over the requirement as far as the fence line, and because this is actually on the fence line, it's going to be of considerable height. It doesn't seem to clarify in the performance criteria as to why that would in fact be acceptable, given the size and bulk, and also in conformity with the area. Could you just explain to me as to why that does meet the performance criteria, please? Lovell?
Mr. Mayor, the fencing question only overshadows the driveway next door, and the visual impacts being offset by an agreement from the developer to print the render and paint it to offset its cost.
Other speakers? Alderman Hume?
Yeah, I think it's worth noting when it comes to the performance criteria in relation to visual impact, that the planning officers have noted in their report that the wall only extends point six metres above the existing fence height. So that, to me, doesn't sound like a large visual impact. It's actually only, my understanding from reading the report, right, would affect the-.
Other speakers? Alderman Cusick?
Mr. Lovell, where the, it says use of rendered finish on the garage car, block wall, block work. Details of select colour for render to match the colour of the dwelling, okay, fifteen Surf Road. Is it envisaged at the week consultation between the owners, thirteen and fifteen, as to exactly what that colour is?
Mr. Mayor, it would be desirable that in case. If not, the application is submitted to the offices and will be encouraged with the power of the government.
Write a reply, Alderman Farne? The motion is recommending approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point two is a development application at thirty-three Y Arena Road, Montague Bay, for multiple dwellings, one existing and one new. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Pearce, seconded. Alderman Cusick?
I know, just a minute. My only comment is the, is the size of unit two to the rear boundary, nine hundred and twenty-five millimeter, rather than four metres, but I've discussed this with officers and I'm happy with that.
Alderman Pearce?
If I had a look too, Mayor, I was more worried about the site, just to make sure what other have been, but no, it's not, so I totally agree with Alderman Cusick. It supports the recommendation.
Other speakers? There being none, I presume no need for write a reply. The motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item eleven point three point three is a development application at Two Cologne Drive Oak Downs for five multiple dwellings. Alderman Pearce, thank you. Second of Alderman Thirley. Alderman Pearce?
Mr. Mayor, again, I had a look at this and of course it's quite a large block. I think it's very compatible with this. I don't see any trouble with this at all. I think it backs onto bush greens. I think it's a very appropriate recommendation.
Alderman Thirley?
Having looked at the report, I don't see any reason to refuse this application. It's a nice layout and it's quite compatible with a number of developments in the area.
Other speakers? There being none, write a reply is not needed, Alderman Pearce. So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Eleven point three point four is a development application at thirty Derwent Lakon Road, Atago, for a dwelling. Alderman Farne, thank you. Second of Alderman Chong. Alderman Farne?
Both the officers' recommendation for approval. Likewise, thank you.
Other speakers? In that case, so I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point five is a subdivision application at hundred and two Pass Road, Rugby, for one lock subdivision. Alderman Farne, thank you. Alderman Chong, seconded. Alderman Farne?
Just a very suitable, small subdivision and I'll take note that item six advised about the concept layout is well thought. This is not an approval for a concept layout, but only purely a one-lock subdivision. Highly sensitive area of this.
Thank you, Alderman Farne. Sorry. Alderman Chong?
Nothing to add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other speakers? The motion recommends approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item eleven point three point six is a development application at twenty-three George Lovell's Close, Richmond, for an outbuilding and carport. Alderman Farne, thank you. And Alderman Chong, thank you. Alderman Farne?
Quite suitable application, doesn't have any real problems with it and I look forward to having another meeting place in Clarence. You might be able to add a little bit of hair given.
Yeah. Alderman Chong?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just note the advice about the covenant on the title that needs to be considered.
Speakers? The motion once again is approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. General Manager? Eleven point three point seven is a subdivision application at thirty-one Queen Street, Bell Reef, for a one-lock subdivision. Alderman Cusick, second of Alderman Dowst. Alderman Cusick, would you like to speak to it?
No, the application is for subdivision only, and I guess the only potential concern might be the proximity of graves, et cetera, but that's not the consideration for us to know.
Dowst?
I agree, Alderman Cusick, but I just bring your attention to all the item fifteen of recommendations, the other three, the disposal of the man who used the semis subject to revision of the area information act. In other words, if they do find human remains within the district, they're subject to archaeologists to remember expenses as well.
Okay. Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Yeah, I cannot agree with this, so I agree with what Alderman Dous just said, if remains are found on, on this land, it comes under a burial information act. Alderman Dous, to myself, has gone over this land. I am not completely convinced, I haven't seen any evidence, that there's still no remains on this, because normally when remains are taken away from a cemetery like this, as done with Sir David's Park and other part, the cemetery at Queenborough, there are normally records to tell you where they've gone. And I was a member of the cemetery trust when council had a rip on the cemetery trust, and I've seen no evidence of this so far. So until I do, I cannot support this.
Speakers? Alderman here?
Yeah, the officers commented on the representation that was received around impact on graves. So concerns are raised about the original gravestones on site, that they require preservation and restoration, and concerns of the impact on, on the graveyard. The officers have noted that the location of graves within the boundaries of the lot is not made up, controlled by the scheme. But there are, there are detailed heritage considerations, which have been part of the heritage assessment, and this, this is something that's, you know, been taken into account in terms of the requirements of the excavation works. It's, as far as I understand from the planning officers' report, it's not actually a planning consideration.
Who? Other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Cusick?
Yeah, that Alderman here is correct, as I understand, and I understand, as I understand that if, if this subdivision does go ahead and then there's an application to build on there, so we'd better not ask Mr. Lovell, as there is capacity to do an archaeological survey to, to try and assess where there's boundaries, I understand, but that's not, that might anyway.
Okay. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Carried. We recall the GM, please. Eleven point three point eight is a development application at four and six Chatsworth Street, Rose Bay, for multiple dwellings and a boundary adjustment. Alderman James?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the motion, as circulated, that the application, that the application be refused for the following reasons.
Can we have a second, please? Alderman Von Burt? Alderman Cusick, seconded. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a copy of it, please?
Okay. Hope it's been circulated. Anybody else got access to a copy?
Circulated a couple, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll start the clock now.
I think, Mr. Mayor, look, as circulated, I have gone into the detail as to why the proposal does not comply with the performance criteria, ten point four point two, P three, and that proposed develop will cause unreasonable loss of amenity, contrary to clause ten point four point two, P three, of the scheme by creating unreasonable visual impact due to the apparent size, bulk, scale, and proportions of the proposed dwellings when viewed from adjoining lots. Mr. Mayor, it is the case that the application should be refused as it does not comply with the planning scheme standard in relation to the permitted building envelope. The proposal does not meet the building envelope, acceptable solution, as none of the proposed dwellings are contained within the prescribed building envelope. And you'll see from the attachment within the agenda that all of those developments, unit one, two, three, and four, are outside the building envelope. And of course, if one of the standards does not meet the performance criteria, then in fact, the proposal can be rejected. There also, in the actual comment, the four dwellings do not comply with the performance criteria, as they will cause unreasonable loss of amenity by creating a significant visual impact due to the apparent scale, bulk, and proportions of the proposed dwellings when viewed from the adjoining lots at twenty-eight thirty-one Marana Avenue, two four eight Chatsworth Street, and ninety and ninety-one Espinar. The predominant pattern development in the street block contained within Chatsworth, Toffen, Yola, Marana, and the Espinar is single and double story dwellings. The planning scheme allows council to consider the relevant objective in an applicable, in applicable standard to help determine whether a development complies with the performance criteria. One of the objectives of the building envelope standard is control the sighting and scale of dwellings to provide consistency in the apparent scale, bulk, mass, and proportion of dwellings. It should be noted that even a small portion from the building envelope requires the whole dwelling to meet the performance criteria. Unit four is the worst example, and we all have that in our attachment, from the northern elevation, is the worst example of this, with the significant building envelope encroachment and combined with its attachment to unit three, with a total width of twenty-five metres, it will leave a significant visual impact due to the apparent scale and bulk, particularly when viewed from the north. The reason all of the dwellings project are outside the building envelope is that their consideration size, each containing three bedrooms, double garage, home office, walk-in pantry and wardrobes and lifts. This form of infill development is out of character with the surrounding area and does little provide diversity of housing size of more affordable dwellings. The simple fact of the matter is, Mr. Mayor, that there is nothing that you could say is comparable to the other dwellings of, in the area, which are predominantly single and two-story buildings. I don't think there is any concern in relation to infill development per se, but because of the bulk, scale, and size of these proposals, it is in fact not in accordance with the performance criteria, because as I mentioned in the introduction, there just has to be one standard that is not, does not meet performance criteria, then council can in fact refuse the application. I seek council support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support Alderman James' report, I'll be very careful, Alderman James. He's outlined the technical side, and I'll focus on the minimally. I've been considering this proposal very carefully, and it's a difficult decision. However, the bulk and size of the combined four units is a concern. Page two, two one five of the report states unit three and four present one large three-story building, twenty-five metres in length. Page two thirteen states maximum height of unit two is nine point five three metres, which is over thirty feet, which requires a variation of maximum height. The ground floor of unit three extends out of the building envelope by one point eight metres. The southern wall of unit four extends outside the building envelope by two metres, and the screening deck on unit three extends outside the building envelope by one point two five metres. Unit three does not comply in relation to private space, as this space is accessed through an area which does not, which did not have minimum dimension. Each of these in themselves may not be an issue, but in the cumulative sense, I believe it is stretching the boundaries, and not only in terms of here, it's stretching the boundaries too much, in particular with the size and height. Initially, when looking down from the existing building in Chatsworth Street, the development did not seem too large or excessive. However, when looking from the Espinar, the visual impact would certainly seem to be excessive. I believe that this would constitute a significant loss of amenity with some of the major properties due to this size and scale. I normally support urban infill, but only where it's consistent with the surrounding area, and I do not believe this development meets this.
Who? Other speakers? Alderman Dous?
I support Alderman James' motion, that I think three, three-story surrounding, and the surrounding industry only two or single story, I think is about the state of context, involves bulk size and scale. And the proposal development areas, Alderman James, goes outside the building envelope. The notes, I spoke to a lot of the neighbours there, and they accept the concept of infill, but on a scale that's compatible with the surrounding area, and this is obviously, in my opinion, not, I think it's an overdevelopment of the size. It's oversize, it's over bulk, it's over everything. Some of the representatives complained, claimed that the, it may supply to the council, which is probably not valid or in doubt, as in Dr. Scott's deputation. On that base, I'd support Alderman James' motion.
Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not support the recommendation, I know that may sound strange, and I must say, I've read the representations, Mr. McElwain, I've got a lot of respect for, because he used to work here, and I must say, when I got his deputation, I did go and see our officers, because I wanted to clarify a few things. As I said, I have pure respect for him, but this is the third time these people have tried to do something on this land. If you look at this report, which I'm sure you've all got this piece of paper, it's got a drain which easily draws, they cannot build on that, so they really haven't got a lot of options for what they want to do. I mean, really, as us that went there, the land scopes down, one in six down that way, we saw that. Now normally, four units on a site that's going to be one thousand three hundred and fifty-five square metres, we wouldn't even be arguing about. But yes, some of these things, as we know, will deter some people, but some of the, some of the comments here, like, I mean, the proposal, the density is three hundred and forty-one square metres per dwelling, which is, you know, that's not too bad, because the minimum density is three hundred and twenty-five, so you know, that's not bad at all. Privacy. Concerns are raised that the development will result in loss of privacy adjoining to the west and north. Now, this is interesting comment. The proposal meets all acceptable solutions relating to privacy standards of the scheme, and therefore this issue cannot have a determining weight. Now, yeah, concern have been raised about the loss of views. Now, yes, I, number eight, I dare say would lose some of their view, I'm the first to admit that, and I walked round this area, because I got this piece of paper and one of the representation, I walked right round there, because I want to see myself what impact it would have on certain buildings. And yes, I think number eight would have some effect, but as I say, at the moment, they still have that view down. Overshadowing was a concern. Concern was raised that the bill will result in overshadowing to adjoining property, properties. And I'll read the comment here. The overshadowing diagrams provided by the applicant demonstrate the proposal will not result in detrimental impact to adjoining dwellings. Now, here's another one I found. The original design was amended and re-advertised twice in response to concerns. Fair enough. Raised by council officers and the representatives. It is considered that the current design would significantly reduce the height, reduce the height and scale of the development, and provides for reasonable separation between the dwellings will not result in unreasonable loss of amenity to surrounding area. The proposal is therefore recommended for approval. Approval by our officers. I've been round there and had a look, and I know a lot of others have. I've seen this. I don't believe it is going to have that much of an impact. As I said, the people that are doing this have got a growing interest, and can't build over it. They limited what they could do on this spot, and I think they've done a damn good job. This is the third time they've attempted to oppose people, and I think they've done a very commendable job in doing that.
Other speakers? Alderman Turner?
Mr. Mayor, I too visited the site with an open mind. Quite often, when you hear three-story developments and you hear of four units on a block, you immediately alarm bells. But if we listen to the objections or to Alderman James' motion, we might, from what was said, without viewing it or putting it in context, immediately think, yes, quite agree. But this is quite a significant gradient on this land, and what is three stories is effectively two and a half, because we're talking about above ground level. And we're also catering for units that are stepped in, in their design. So initially, the setbacks cater quite, quite adequately, but the bulk of the three stories is set back even further. So when we talk in, in terms of visual impact and the bulk, it is, it is reduced, and the impact is, is reduced because of the design of the actual building. So I think it's, it's a thoughtful design, I think it's going to add value to the area. These are not non-substantial villas, this is not a cheap development, this is a quite, a very classy quality development. And if you read the officer's report, I can't refuse this, so I am not supporting Alderman James' motion.
Alderman McCarlin, and then Alderman Walker, I think.
But the refusal, Mr. Mayor, in the context that, it is very clear that, as put forward to us in representations, it does not abide by the scheme in clause seven point five point four. I do refuse to comment that this application, being its third attempt to appease people, is relevant, because there's no appeasement that needs to be done. We need to stand here and assess this application on its merit as it is put to us this evening. From my perspective, when I look at a refusal, this council did not long ago, and was mentioned tonight, on Sixth Fenestre Street, which was for four units, which basically, again, changed the building envelope, and this council refused that on the grounds that we felt that they were pushing the limits just a bit far and changing the planning scheme in their own right. Once again, I believe that the interpretation of the planning scheme is being pushed by this development in the sense that, when you look at the consistency of the current development in the area, regardless of the degree of slope, there are no other houses in that area that have been built in this fashion. This particular style has always been promoted for the side of, the sides of hill faces, and a good example of that is across from Shoreline up on the Glebe. However, in this context, from my perspective, it's overuse of that development style to promote a building which goes outside the building envelope. I have stated before that I feel this planning scheme has given people adequate room to move, and I'm in no mood to see those building envelopes changed for the benefit of an application, which the adjacent landowners have consistently said, well, and is not suited to the scale, bulk, and massing within their community and within that particular area. Again, I feel these sorts of developments will undermine the current market values of stock around them, and to their own, you know, it won't pay off for them in the, in the long run. Like Fenestre Street, I feel we should be reducing this application on the grounds that the building envelope has not been met, and it doesn't meet seven point five point four of the scheme, which requires us to assess it to the representation we have been presented with.
Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the applicants and the representatives for providing their insights and perspective on this matter, for both, I guess, requesting us to do site inspections, and I believe that in some instances, there's not a lot of value in that with straightforward properties on straightforward blocks, but in situations like this, I do think that it can be something that helps inform the decision-making process. I'd say that the applicants are to be commended for the visual representations that they've included in the design package. They have highlighted in a very straightforward and transparent fashion the incursions outside the building envelope. I'd also like to note that I think we should put on record too, that when designs come before us, that make, if you like, provision for aging in place, but this is something that's a good thing. So the proposals here are not going to likely start off with lifts, but there is capacity, should owners of this proposal want to do it, that it could be put in. The new scheme is the new scheme, is the new scheme, that is what we're operating under now. You've heard me before talk about the glory days of the Lawrence Planning Scheme 2007, a no-nonsense document, 375 metres squared is the block size, take it or leave it, no arguments. And I think planning was more certain then and less contentious. New schemes mean new norms in the process of being established, and that's what we've heard in other discussions tonight around Venice Street. The new minimum lot size is now 325 metres squared, so as this footprint has shrunk, we've sort of had a paradox where the per-metre-square size of many, if you like, townhouse applications, the per-metre square size of the actual application seemed to be increasing. So smaller footprint, more risk in proposals, it can only go in one direction as well, and I guess it can go vertically upwards, but it can also go into the ground as well. I believe irrespective of the decision this council comes to tonight, this matter is going to be appealed one way or the other. And, you know, for the decision-making process, the incursions around the envelope mean that we're now looking, or it's opened up the matter of consistency around the scale, the bulk, and in, you know, reflection around what is it like in relation to surrounding properties. Now, the houses, if you like, on this side of Chatsworth Street and certainly on Marana are of a very different nature. There are on the top side of Chatsworth Street some units, indeed on several blocks, but to my mind, they're quite small in their scale. So I bring that up because I do believe that what's being proposed here, these four quite sizable townhouses are quite unique to the area. I do believe in choice of options, but I guess the reflection around here is, would this be the new norm for Rose Bay and Montague Bay? And I bring that up because these are the areas that are not so much as the crow flies, but as the car drives, the closest parts to the CBD. So if an area is going to be subject to intensive infill, I suspect these are the suburbs that may well feel it first. As I said earlier, we're in a brave new world of a new planning scheme, and what wouldn't be permissible in planning schemes past is now something that comes before us for discretion, something for us to reflect on. And I suspect as with Venice Street, the Chatsworth Street will become a precedent setter, not around per-metre square footprint of land, but around, if you like, you know, the bulky and the consistency within the area. Now, I'm going to be totally upfront, I've found this a very challenging proposal, and that's kind of what planning authorities are there to deal with. If everything was straightforward, we wouldn't need to exist. This is a challenging one, because we are shackled and prescribed in how we can look at things, and there is discretion, but it's certainly not unfettered. So I've reflected on this a lot, and as I said, given the dimensions of what's proposed and consistency with the surrounding areas, I've come to the position that I won't be supporting the proposal, so I am in effect supporting Alderman James's motion of refusal.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before I contribution, I just wanted to, through you, Mr Mayor, ask Mr Lovelace a question. What, would there be any, what would the difference be presumably if this was being assessed under the Tasmanian planning scheme?
I think that's getting, if you can give us some relevance to that question.
The relevance of it is that I understand that there's a principle, and I've forgotten the name of it, but there's a principle that you can look at.
Doesn't carry any weight?
Possible future schemes that, you know, can carry weight in a decision that may go one way or the other, I've forgotten the name of that principle.
The term to is the concept of seriously entertained planning proposal, which carries weight, depending on the stage in which that proposal is reached. Normally, that would be, the greater the weight would be, for example, if it had been gone through the advertising process, adopted by the council, maybe even before the decision was made.
The other principle I've been trying to consider is, there have been decisions made previously by the Planning Appeals Tribunal, and I have spoken to planning officers about this, that a performance criteria can, it can be accepted, a performance criterion not being criterion, not being met, if there would be little difference by adjusting that to meet the acceptable solution. Now, the problem we have by that decision is that in some cases, the Planning Appeals Tribunal has accepted that principle, and in some cases, they've gone completely the other way and said, no, if the acceptable solution is not met, you need to consider the, you know, you need to consider the performance criteria regardless of what that adjustment, you know, to meet acceptable solution would bring. So I've been really struggling with this application, really struggling to make a decision one way or the other, looking for something that might tip the balance. One was that principle, the other is whether there's been any guidance given on what, you know, the thought was or what the purpose was behind this visual impact caused by apparent bulk and scale. It's something that's got a very subjective interpretation, and if I understand the planning officer's report correctly, what they've basically said is, well, the view lines have been maintained where it comes to, you know, people's primary views, which is out to the west and north, looking out to the sea, because of the terrace effect, because where the bulk of units three and four is behind the units, that, you know, that's not a sort of a primary view. With it allows to rely on, and also the fact that this particular performance criterion hasn't been tested in the tribunal. With the exception of unit four, I think the protrusions beyond the building envelope are relatively minor. If we do vote to refuse this tonight, rather than appeal to the tribunal, we may end up with another application that adjusts slightly to bring it within the envelope, so the performance criterion doesn't have to apply. I don't know, that's something that's going to be up to the applicant. But as I said, really struggling with this one, it's difficult to know what was envisaged by that particular performance criterion, we may get greater clarity around it if it is tested in the tribunal. I expect that it's very likely one way or the other will be. All I can do based on weighing up the pros and cons is, I, well, the advice I've received is to go with the officer's recommendation, except their interpretation of visual impact caused by apparent bulk and scale, and their interpretation is, you know, that one that's detailed extensively in the report about maintaining view lines, and in that case, I'm going to oppose Alderman James's motion.
Other speakers? In that case, write a reply, Alderman Cusick?
Thanks.
Sorry, Alderman James, yeah, my apologies. If we look at this chart, which has been enclosed within our report, if, for instance, that met the building envelope, then it's not an issue, in a sense, it's not an issue, because then it would, for all intents and purposes, be approved. However, unit three, four, and the scale and bulkness of particularly unit number four, is outside the building envelope, and it stands out quite considerably. The other thing that needs to be taken into consideration is that the predominant pattern of development in this street block contained within Chatsworth, Topin, Yola, Marana Avenue and the Espinard is of single and double-story dwellings. In other words, this development is not in keeping with the amenity of the area, because the outlying area is of single and double-story only. And it's difficult to see how four three-story dwellings in the middle of a street block containing one and two-story dwellings meets the objective within the planning scheme. The numerous encroachments, and they are shown on this plan, the numerous encroachments outside the prescribed building envelope exacerbate the unreasonable visual impact due to the apparent scale and bulk. So all it will retake is one of these conditions, to be not in keeping with the planning scheme, to basically, I believe, that it is a case of this council refusing the application because it does not meet the performance criteria. I seek council support. So the recommendation before the chair is for refusal, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. We have a move of Mr Mayor and Mrs Cusick's recommendations. I think Alderman Pearce was just that end. Would you like to speak to the motion, Alderman Pearce?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to, I really have that. But, and the decision that I've come to has been based on planning grounds. Now, I can understand Alderman James's comments in relation to consistency, but as I said, the incursions beyond the building envelope are actually minor, there is an exception of that when it comes to unit four. What we've got to remember also is that, is that unit four, and one of the principles that the Planning Appeals Tribunal has often applied in these decisions, is to say, where it comes to the performance criteria, how are they impacted by the areas where a development doesn't meet the acceptable solution? So for example, if you have a question about overshadowing, is it overshadowed by the portion that extends beyond the envelope or above the height or, you know, towards the boundary setback? And in the case of the largest incursion into, beyond the building envelope, that's not actually part of the building that really has the visual impact representatives are talking about. The question of visual impact, as I said, is a very subjective one, it's one that I expect that we'll get some more guidance on by the tribunal, and hopefully we'll be able to better, able to make these decisions, when we understand what their thinking is in regards to interpretation of the performance criterion. My interpretation is that the planning officers, that we're looking at the question of view lines, and they've given quite a comprehensive outline of the impact that has on view lines, particularly primary views, and I think that's a key consideration.
Thank you, Mayor, I agree with Alderman. I'm not going to go through what I said earlier, but as I do agree with one thing, as most of you said, this did take a lot of time, it did take a lot of consideration, and I think now we've got, I believe, the right decision, and I hope it's unanimous.
Other speakers? Alderman James? Yeah, look, Mr Mayor, the question of the proposal does not meet the building envelope is, as none of the dwellings are contained within the building envelope, and that's quite apparent from this diagram that we all have in our agenda. And that performance criteria requires that the sighting and scale of a dwelling must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity, and that, the definition of amenity, we just was talked about by one of the representatives earlier this evening, and that basis, the loss of amenity due to visual impacts caused by the apparent scale, bulk and proportions of the dwelling when viewed from an adjoining lot. So in actual fact, it does not meet the performance criteria, and okay, the decision has been made that the officer's recommendation is in fact what has been carried this evening. Oh, we haven't carried it yet, it was signed before the chair. Well, okay. Thank you. Okay, it's before the chair, but the one to refuse it was obviously lost, so the case of whether this gets up and what is another matter, I suppose, but anyway, at the end of the day, the performance criteria requires the sighting and scale of the dwelling that must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity due to the visual impacts caused by the apparent scale, bulk or proportions of the dwelling when viewed from a joining lot. So quite frankly, the unit number three is definitely outside the building envelope, it's bulk, scale and size, and the actual dimensions of this building are huge, even if you can talk about a scaled sort of level from the viewing from the property owner just on the actual boundary of that. But the question arises, it's got bulk, it's got scale, it's overbearing, so the performance criteria has not been met, and I wouldn't be surprised, Mr Mayor, that this goes to the tribunal, that it will be thrown out, because it does not meet the performance criteria, as we've already spoken about, because it's outside the building envelope, and it's because of that bulk, and it's not in sort of comparable with other buildings in the area. So if it's going to go to the tribunal, let it, because at the end of the day, there is that subjectivity, if you want to use that, within the performance criteria, that one of colleagues has used this evening, but the objectivity within the planning scheme is in fact, my view, that it does not meet the performance criteria, and therefore, I believe that if it goes to appeal, that the tribunal will not hesitate in actually referring to the Flood versus Georgetown case and the Venice Street particular case, because even though we're talking about footprint in relation to the Venice case, we are still talking about whether it was comparable or in keeping with what is in the surrounding areas. And in that particular case, not only was the density or footprint determined in the Venice case, but also it was, was it comparable, and was there any other four-story units in Venice Street in that particular vicinity? And what did the tribunal come up with? They said, no, it was not comparable, and therefore, they supported council's decision at the time which was to refuse it. And I believe that's where we're going to go this time, and it is not in keeping with the surrounding properties, and I believe the tribunal will throw it out. Alderman James? Alderman Cho?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, like everybody else, I've wrestled with this decision, it's a difficult site, it's a difficult development on the site, but at the end of the day, the performance criteria and the concept of amenity are fairly subjective and used quite subjectively, much as sometimes we would like a really hard and fast planning scheme, because it would make life a lot simpler for all of us, it's actually quite subjective in how it's applied in a lot of cases, and because of that, because I've found it difficult, because of all the different reasons that began tonight, I feel that it's appropriate to go with the officer's recommendation. I feel that it's appropriate to go with the officer's recommendation. I find that the logic in the way that they've put out the criterion and the information about it is hard to ignore. And because of that, I'm going to support the officer's recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't support the recommendation, as I stated before. And again, I'll use the word subjectivity like a number of people. In the context that the report commonly, throughout the report, mentions the word reasonable. And that word reasonable then applies to our wonderful professional planning staff's personal perception of what the word reasonable actually stands for. So within my comprehension of planning, I was of the belief that the current scheme was going to give us consistency. And here we have an application that's not consistent at all. So I don't think I'm being inconsistent to not support this and being consistent in my common tirade of why I don't like the current planning scheme and wish we went back to the old one. So I don't think it's reasonable either because I believe that some of the comments by our professional planning staff are based on subjective point of view.
We've had a diagram being constantly shown to us here today. And at the time that I viewed that diagram, I thought it was a wonderful way of showing how minor those indiscretions were. They've been used to show you, to make it look like they are significant. But they're the factors that we're making a decision on. And I can look at the report and I've highlighted, and I can quote from that report. And I am trusting the council's recommendation in this case because of the intricacy with which they understand the planning scheme. I've put all this in context. I understand the Venice decision and I didn't make that decision, I was opposed to that. But Unit 1, for instance, although three stories, does comply with the maximum height due to the proposed excavation for the lower levels. 1 and 2 are two stories at the southern elevation and then followed the topography of the site. So there are only a small portion of the dwelling is three stories. It's considered that the variations to the building for Units 1 and 2 are minor and will not result in a visual impact when viewed. Alderman McFarlane says that's a subjective opinion, but that is an opinion that we are, well, I'm relying on and that I also understand to be the case. The design of the building for Unit 4 sets the levels up, the slope, and angles. And Unit 3 is angled away, and it'll break up the mass of the building. As I said before, it's been set so that it will reduce the visual impact. Unit 3 is two stories and the three-story section is located further away from other dwellings. Unit 4, which has the greatest bulk, is located 8.7 metres from the boundary and it's private open space. It gives it a reasonable separation between the two dwellings. So I can go on and if you read the report thoroughly, but to hold up this diagram and say that that is a reason why, that is actually a reason why our subjectivity allows us to support this application.
Unders?
Mr Mayor, I don't think the officer's recommendation. I know what they say here, there's all these pretty words, but when you actually get down there and see that and see with markers like types of trees and that, you see the imposition is going to blow the main. I mean, all this is very nice, but it doesn't, to me, it doesn't relate to reality. You go down there and have a look and get the feel of it. You'll say this is all nice and looks great when you read it, but I don't think it really applies.
Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think when Alderman James tabled his motion, the points were fairly covered extensively as to why the proposal shouldn't be supported. I believe those points still stand. It's not too late for one of the people who voted last time to have some reflection on their decision, see the wisdom and change their mind. And if they do that, I foreshadow that I will absolutely move that motion again. In the absence of that, I'll just reiterate that I stand by the place I came to to determine my view last time, we considered this 10 minutes ago. That hasn't changed. It is a difficult one. And I disagree with what the majority decision was last time. But I respect how people came to that decision and I respect that for all of us, this is challenging.
Alderman Yehm, write a reply.
I just want to echo exactly what Alderman Walker said at the end of his contribution, that it is a challenging decision. And I respect the views of all my colleagues, whichever way they've gone on this, because it was so challenging. And I genuinely believe that each one of us, even though we haven't all come to the same conclusion, has considered this in great detail. I've visited the site. I've visited the site itself and surrounding properties. I've met with objectives and I've met with the proponents. You know, I can visualize, you know, what's on the site and understand the heights, et cetera. But I, you know, I genuinely believe that each one of us has done our best to come to AU based on planning grounds and our best interpretation of the planning scheme. Which, let's face it, in the context of this development, is a difficult scheme to interpret. And particularly when we have a performance criteria where the intent behind that criteria isn't very clear. You know, there's no instructions that were given with Planning Directive 4, which is where this criterion came from, to say, you know, this is why this criterion's been put forward and how it is to be interpreted. So, you know, there are various things that can go on and in my case, I've accepted what the planning officers have said and their detailed reasons. I suspect that, one way or another, this was likely to go to the Planning Appeals Tribunal and we should get an interpretation from them if so and hopefully some greater clarity. And that'll certainly give us a lot of help when it comes to our guidance in future decisions on this particular criteria.
Motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11.3.9, Development Application 13 Macquarie Court, Cambridge. Alderman Walker?
Yes, indeed. I'm quite happy to move this motion. And I would note that it's a pretty good site for the meeting facility. And I know that it wasn't that long ago, I think we considered a similar project on Rotherham Beach Road. This is going to be a better site. And I think what's been reported was a really logical setup as well. So I think this is a good proposal. I think the officers have worked through matters that needed noting. And I would warmly seek council support.
Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I echo Alderman Walker's comments and I seek council support.
Other speakers? I guess there's no need for write a reply. The motion is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. Moving on to asset management, 11.5.1, Kangaroo Bluff Historic Site. Alderman Cusick? Just confirm it's been circulated to everyone and everyone's got a copy, please.
Mr Mayor, which alternate motion is it? Is it A, B, D and D? Yes? What's this one? Oh, I don't know what that one is.
Do we have a second of course? Alderman James?
Yeah, so it's A, B, C and D because there's one just A, B and C. Is that this one? I like this one.
It's, well, 11.5, Asset Management, 11.5.1, Kangaroo Bluff Historic Site, ending with B at the bottom of the page. Does everyone have a copy of that? It's been moved by Alderman Cusick, seconded by Alderman James. Alderman Cusick?
Yes, Mr Mayor. I think, officer, I'm going to give you a brief reminder that council has taken over the management of the Kangaroo Bluff Historic Site. This motion effectively says that we should not be making a decision on taking or management responsibility and all of that might entail without firstly carrying out due diligence relating to, but not necessarily restricted to, ongoing costs, particularly in relating to ongoing repairs of the main or safety matters, including potential insurance issues. And that is basically B. That C, that the funding for the review of the management plan the council provided in its budget 2017/18 managing the use of the purpose of the due diligence exercise, that the general management request to provide further reports once the review of the management plan is completed, so council can consider position and possibly scope and funding that may be required to fully complete the due diligence review.
Seconder?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Look, I think it's appropriate for us to make sure that we do our homework and also put in place the necessary checks and balances that are necessary before we proceed to actually take over or officially take over or the government to hand over the Belray Bluff Historic Site. Back in 2003, on the record, I moved a motion that we do just that. And it was accepted by the council back then. And I suppose it was regarded as being appropriate that we should have the fort as part of our network because it makes sense in the sense that we've got Historic Belray Village, we have the barn, and also we have the Fort on Belray Bluff. And so our thinking at the time, I believe, was that it would be complimentary to our other historic buildings, structures that currently are within the city of Clarence. However, this motion is good because not only extends our appreciation in receiving the formal offer, but also to, it requires us to do our homework and utilize that $50,000 that we have set aside to undertake the due diligence exercise that what is encapsulated within this motion. So having said that, we've got a long way to go. I was one of a number who actually went up to the Belray Bluff and we had a tour of the premises. And as I was talking to one of the Parks and Wildlife, you know, I sort of tallied up the numbers here and, you know, it started at $300,000, it got to $500,000, then up to about a million, then even beyond that, it actually got to about $2 million if you wanted to do a number of matters, Mr Mayor, namely to make it safe. In other words, the public need to be assured that if it is in council's control or management, then in fact, due diligence, the risk of any member of the public either during working out, during the daylight hours or after hours, is basically, well, is covered or is in fact ticked off by the council. At the moment, it's not that. It's going to take a lot of money, in my view, to actually make it safe. And also too, the scale of development that perhaps was envisaged back in 2003 was for a kiosk. The toilets obviously would need to be upgraded to bring them up to a suitable standard. The existing building is, the toilet block has been shut, it's in the wrong location, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of things there that would need to be done. And one of the things that caught my eye was on the southern end, near the pillar box on the wall. The basic, the wall is falling down and it's being undermined by moisture, et cetera, et cetera. So look, there are certain things that would have to be done. And by going through this process of due diligence and making sure that what we are about to take on board and also be ticked off by the Heritage Council, that may by the very nature mean that they have certain requirements that they would want any authority that would be taking it over to meet. So let's do our homework. Let's just go softly, softly on this and obviously do our due diligence exercise and then come back when we got the facts and we know exactly what's involved, then I think we can go to the next step.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Chong?
Well, I think we all appreciate the historical value of this site to Clarence and certainly the trip to go and look at the blast site was really interesting and gave a much better perspective of what is both the value of the site but also the potential issues with the site. And I think this methodology of making sure that we've done our due diligence before we actually take it over is a very sensible approach. And it means that if we do get to that point or if we get to a point of being involved in a group of people that actually have a responsibility for it, we're going into it with our eyes open.
I don't support the motion in the context that I feel that I fear that risk and fear factors go hand in hand at times. I'd rather see the two go together. That if we had a management plan that we could look at that gave us options and that those options within, given the due diligence approach to them as far as the long-term management was concerned, then I would be happy with that. But I'm not happy with funding a due diligence exercise if it's not taking on board the management that's needed but also options because currently that site has been left for a very long time. From my perspective, you could fill it in and just whip a snippet and put some toilets in and grow some more trees. That's what you could do, option A. Then you could look at, you know, future restoration considering future abilities to manage the area with grants, et cetera. But to just look at the risks involved without really taking on board a good management overview and process, I think is undermining the future of taking on it all.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, this site does have incredible historical value, but not just that, I believe it's a site that has incredible economic value as part of Clarence's visitor. As a major historic site, if, you know, even if we allow visitors free access to the site and have no commercial activity on there, I still think it's an economic asset because of the fact that it's another visitor experience. Having said that, I would actually favor some minor commercial activity, you know, in regards to mirroring the costs. But that's something we're going to go through, I think, at a later stage, you know, when we're talking about management plans. It's something I think we need to consult on the community about before we proceed with it. Everyone here knows my view from the last meeting, from the workshops. I would be in favor of immediate takeover. But I understand, I'm a practical person, I understand the numbers just aren't here tonight for that to happen. And I'm not going to stand in the way of this motion getting up. I think it's a good compromise on a way forward. I am just, I remain concerned about the risk of the offer being taken off the table, but I do suspect that the government will keep it on the table and I certainly hope they will. I mean, if you consider the fact that we've been, you know, seeking this since 2003 and it's taken 14 years to finally get the offer, we've, you know, sort on the basis of that, I hope and I guess that the government won't, state government won't begrudge us, you know, maybe another six months or a few years or whatever it will take to conduct this due diligence. Having said that, you know, there is a lot of concern about the cost. There is a lot of concern about the risks. One of, a big risk that I see is if you leave the site in the current state One of the, a big risk that I see is if you leave the, the site in the current state of management it is now and it's, it's allowed to, you know, it's allowed to decay, it's not used to its full potential. I think the cost is something that council could proceed at, you know, whatever pace we, we choose to. And almost any pace is likely to be a lot better than what's currently being undertaken by Parks and Wildlife. There has been a lot of talk about, about the risks. And one of the comments that I had made in, in the workshop was, because I did sort of make the point, well, if, you know, if the first thing to do when we take over the site is put a fence around it to make sure nobody trips and falls, you know, why isn't, why isn't the state government doing the same thing? And I've heard the comment that the state government self-insures. Well, as a matter of fact, when you self-insure, you actually take on a greater risk. You know, if, if you pay for insurance, you're actually, you're actually divulging that, that risk to, to insurers. So I'm not, I'm not sure that that's necessary in argument. But having said that, we are, we are where we are. Look, I, I, I am really keen to progress this. It does concern me a bit that at the time I was asking questions and trying to get this process moving forward and I was asking questions in council meeting about the progress, that it took until we were at the point of considering acceptance of the office, offer at a council meeting that the, these concerns were raised and, and that, you know, the process was deferred. I would have preferred it if those concerns had been raised a bit earlier and I think we could have managed this process a lot better. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's not a good look in the eyes of the state government and particularly when we've been, you know, so aggressively pursuing this on the basis of the two thousand and three resolution. But having said that, look, at, at least, at least the acceptance is there by my council colleagues. If we're not going to take it over tonight, if we're not going to accept the offer, that, you know, the consideration of accepting the offer is still on the table. That, that everyone understands the huge historical and economic significance of this site and that we do actually have a way forward. Thank you.
Quanda, I'm generally supportive of the motion as well if I can speak as an Alderman on this. So just wondering if under B, the, the second last para finishes up with facilities used as a community cultural asset. I'm just wondering whether moving second might be able to contemplate a community cultural and tourism asset there to add just a little bit of weight to what's mentioned further previously on commercial opportunities so that it, it actually invokes that tourism aspect to it. Second up? Second was Alderman James? Thanks. So the motion becomes amended to include the words 'and tourism' just before 'asset'. Thanks very much for that. Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've heard some things go on tonight, but being in business, the one thing you've got to do when you're in business is be careful what your insurance, insurers tell you. Yes, it's true, Alderman James. And I would imagine the first thing this council would do is get our insurers to have a look at it because we went up there and Alderman Dousk took some marvelous photos of how it was decaying. And I'm a bit weary just to say, take it on, open chequebook, no, we're going to pay for this. I want to know what our insurance people say because I think Alderman Cusick, it may have been, it may have been said before, that maybe insurance will say, we take it over, just put a fence around it, lock it up. Now, I want to make sure that what our liabilities are and then when they say, yes, this, this and this, then we go ahead with everything, there was no objection to that. I mean, at some stage I would like to think that we could take it over if the costs were reasonable and spaced over time. But let's be honest, it is decaying badly and the fact is, we were told by the Parks and Wildlife, when the bottom of those mounds go, the walls, the, the brickwork down the bottom, the whole wall has to be replaced. So it's not a cheap cost, but I just want to know what are the dangers to people there. I'm sure if everything's okay, I'm sure you can do a lot with it. But one of the other things I will say, Mayor, that we talked about Kangaroo Bluff and its historic site, everything else. Tonight, we let a block, well, it's past, we let a block go on a church just down the road, which I, I think I recall is the oldest church and cemetery in, in Clarence or Belray, I cannot remember now because I didn't read that. And it's a pity that we couldn't have worked even up to like now, we could have worked in consultation with the owners and had some more interpretation panels and things like this because here we are, we've got saved one link and we virtually let another one go.
Pardon me. This is the alternative motion you have when you really don't have any other alternative. We've got to this point because despite a motion in two thousand and three, an aspiration, the actual cold light of day, mechanics, planning around it, envisaging it, wargaming, if you like, what you actually wanted it for and how it was going to work, doesn't seem to be part of the process. And that's, that's a disappointment. And I'd echo a certain building along Cambridge Road that council had a similar thing for. It's great desire to get it and they have real idea what they were going to do with it, that didn't go ahead. The Bluff historic site is, on balance, far more blessing than curse, I think, as far as something you'd want to have in your area. It is a really special spot in a really bad way at the moment. What are council's strengths? What do we offer as a unique strength proposition to this that Parks and Wildlife don't? It's probably not on the restoration of antiquities, if you like, of degraded heritage. The skill sets that we have, what we can do better, cheaper, faster, is around the, the likes of the, the ground maintenance that are sot there, the mowing, the, the bin emptying, we're in the area already. It's, it's what we can do better and cheaper, it's what we can do to make that site more presentable and more attractive. And that's a different proposition from being in the restoration of heritage relics. So I do support the alternative motion because there is no alternative. It's, it's a little disappointing how we got to that point, but we are where we are.
Mr. Mayor, that's Alderman Pierce said this site has incredible historical value. It's also potentially a great icon of value. And if you look at the last paragraph in B, it states that the potential source of funding options is agreed grant requests, joint fundings and joint ventures, et cetera. That's what we should explore. Now, everybody seems to think that, that I've talked to anyone, that all this marketing is going to come out of ratepayers. I've been talking around Townsend and John Turley and there are probably multiple sources of finance, probably available to refurbish things like the wall at no expense from the ratepayers up through a request. And all this stuff, they didn't give us anything. And I think that we should investigate those possibilities and then, then actually come back to the idea, actually how much is this going to cost the ratepayers? But not dismissive saying, oh, it's too much, it's too old, it's falling down. Alderman Pierce said the walls are decaying, well, they are. But I mean, that sort of thing, you can actually get money from other sources, Woodwell and Townsend, to refurbish it. The day-to-day maintenance, like the mowing, the lawns, the tonne of the tods, et cetera, are not available in those requests. But the actual refurbishment of the infrastructure of the whole thing, um...
I, I think it's probably typical, Mr. Mayor, that the risk factor always comes before anything else. And maybe in this day and age, that's what happens. But the unfortunate thing about that is that it actually destroys vision. And I think it's a big picture issue. It's not really about trying to sort of work out the, the ins and outs and all the intricacies because there's a lot of imagination can come to this site and, and a lot of community involvement in getting this site restored. And we're just talking very briefly, Alderman Farland and I, about the prison and their stonework that they have been practising and working towards. Now, what a magnificent project it would be to involve and to enhance their skills and bringing the whole community together and Alderman Dousk has just talked about other ways of sourcing finance. It's not, it's something that, that you've worked on for, how many years? Twenty-something years. And then the state government comes and says, here you go. And we go, oh, 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 it's all too much. You actually have to decide on what your vision is for that site. It's the most magnificent piece of land, we all stood there in absolute awe of it. And that is an asset for the community. It's a magnificent asset and I think we have to, we have to embrace it while we can. And don't let it slip through our hands.
I'd actually like to know what the fifty thousand dollars is actually going to cover within this list of due diligence and particularly in relation to part D, where the general manager requests to provide a further report once the review of the management plan is completed, so the council can consider its position and the possible scope and funding that may require to complete the due diligence review. So obviously this fifty thousand is only going to cover part of the due diligence. So could it be explained, please, what that's going to actually cover, the fifty thousand dollars? And what isn't covered by the fifty thousand dollars? And what is most important to actually be done first, second, third, fourth?
Mr. Timmy? For you, Mr. Mayor. Fifty thousand dollars that was put into the estimate for the final adoption of budget was just that, an estimate. The first priority would be to review the strategic asset management plan. That would be the number one priority. Given that, to get that done, we'd have to engage specialists in the area. We haven't made any inquiries in, in respect to that, but I don't think there'd be much change out of fifty thousand dollars on updating the strategic asset management plan. Then the next stage would be then to come back and report back to council, probably at a workshop, just saying this is what the strategic, strategic asset management plan have found. This is what we need to do so we get some sense for that. Then, then it would depend on what the next priority would be and probably the next priority would be those things that are listed in there. Is seeking a purpose and long-term vision for the site about what it could, what its potential cultural potential is and what its tourism potential is and what activities you want to take on site. And it'll be a long-term plan and that will require additional funding.
Does that mean that after we've actually done the review of the strategic asset management plan, at that point in time, we could actually decide not to go any further?
Oh, if there's no money budgeted, that's obviously a choice we have.
I would say apart from the budgetary component, if we actually do the strategic asset management plan and that comes up with, if you like, all sorts of financial, major financial issues along with other issues, is that a time when we can say, come back to council and say we no longer want to actually consider taking the management over? Or is it that we have to actually continue through all of these?
This is not, there's fifty thousand dollars and council can pull the plug on this project any time that wants to, Alderman Van Berdoe, it's not an issue that's going to commit us into the long term all the way through the process at all.
Right of reply, Alderman Cusick?
Firstly, historical value is unchallenged. However, I'm not qualified to make an assessment as to what work might be needed, both in the short term and the long term, in repairing, maintaining and making safe. I also visit the site and from my lay observation, a lot of work is needed and there are potential safety issues that need to exist prior to making any decision on taking over control of management. Alderman Farland, McFarlane mentioned the management plan, well, that, that's part of this motion. Alderman Hume suggested that maybe we take it over a million. I believe the risk of doing this, a two great risk and for future council, I believe it would be grossly irresponsible to take on such a venture without due diligence, irrespective of what the state, how the state government might operate. Alderman, after due diligence, it's council that will make the decision. Alderman Dousk, well, you know, we should be investigating potential sources of funding. I absolutely agree and that can be part of this. Some Aldermen, you know, I mean, we're talking about the fifty thousand, some Aldermen suggest we take it over and go ahead without, first with no budget. I think fifty thousand dollars will get us started and we'll make a decision from there.
The motion before the chair is as circulated with the two additional words, 'and tourism'. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Item eleven point five point two for Hooky Street, Ropie Street light. Alderman McFarlane, thank you. Second up? Thank you, Alderman Pierce. Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to it? Alderman Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, one of the reasons why I set the motion is because I got an email from Mr. Graham today, which I'm quite happy about saying, Mr. Graham, would you like to just explain the spillage that we can go on this side to protect some of the neighbours? Because I'm just a bit, I'm just a bit worried that other Aldermen do not know about this, that's all.
Graham, may I have an answer there?
True, Mr. Mayor, at the Friday meeting, Alderman Pierce and the man lied about the other shielding of things to be done to minimise the light. I, Sherry, explained the height, two things, the height of the community is generally lower than the standard by the power lines for that all the village. There is shielding that can be done also and the initial model indicating that sort of the boundary of the property, the surface of it only goes about one block, which is quite low. But we certainly can look at top and bottom and that for the life insurance unit as being to minimise, and I'm not just giving the life value at our luck levels, but might be a player as well.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Mr. Mayor, firstly, I'd like to refer to Mr. Pitt and Sherry's report and in particular, the background. And that is the current city council has identified that the lighting at the intersection of Hooky Street and Hooky Place in Ropie requires auditing to assess, this is the important words, to assess whether the existing lighting is sufficient or there is a need for improvement. Nowhere in this report has there been a request for safety light to be installed. And at our meeting on Friday, there was this reference to the fact that the, the applicant, who at the time I didn't know, but I do know now is Miss S Wagner, because I've received a report from Mr. Graham outlining, a request has been received from Mrs. S Wagner at sixty-six Hooky Street. A check of our electronic files found a request from this address in two thousand and twelve, but none others. And Pitt and Sherry's fee was eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. And Mr. Graham authorised the work, authorised the audit work. So the point I'm making here is that there was a, a comment made that this light was for safety purposes. And that was why, in fact, the audit report was requested in order to, it seemed to me to be a case of, of a safety matter. However, in the Pitt and Sherry's report, it says quite clearly, I just repeated it, that was as to whether or not to assess the existing lighting is sufficient or if there is a need for improvement. is a need for improvement. So on the basis of one person requesting council to undertake an audit report for the purpose of determining as to whether there's existing lighting or not, as distinct from the safety matters that were provided on Friday, and that was the key reason why, in fact, this light needs to be reinstated, reinstalled. It just seems to me that nowhere in the Pitt and Sherry report is it quite specific in relation to the safety of the person who has requested it, but merely it would seem that the request has been to determine, or what council has decided to undertake is as to whether or not it is, the lighting is sufficient or otherwise in the street or at that particular intersection of Hooky and Hooky Place. It's my understanding that there are three people in that street who are opposed to, in fact, the actual reinstatement of the light. It's Mr. McDermott, Mrs. O'Rourke, and Mr. Clark, all of whom have said that they would not support the actual reinstatement of a light in, on that, on that particular pole. So my point that I made on Friday at the briefing was, how is it that one person and no others can be involved in the process to catch the ear of the council, to go ahead and spend eighteen hundred and fifty dollars on an audit report from Pitt and Sherry in order to determine as to whether or not the light is sufficient or otherwise, and not on safety measures? And if that's the case, if it's not safety, and it was talking about adequate lighting on that junk intersection, and adequate lighting only, not safety, then why haven't other people in the street been approached? Because they, as I've just mentioned, three of whom do not want to have this light reinstated. So on a simple consultative basis, on the basis of whether the lighting is, is appropriate or otherwise, and not on a safety perspective, then why haven't those other persons in the street been consulted? And I think that is where we have fallen down on this issue, and we should have actually consulted with other people in the street before we actually put forward this recommendation.
Other speakers? Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a question to show you to Mr. Graham. My feeling is, if somebody asks, is the lighting adequate, that actually, I mean, they're not saying, is it adequate for me to read a book? Or is it adequate, you know, they're asking, is it adequate for me to walk along the pavement in a safe manner? That would be my presumption in that kind of public area. Was, was that the logic that was applied? Actually have an obligation then to put a light in if you like, whether it's a private, in that place.
Oh, I think that's putting a bit too much pressure on the staff to say that.
But if it's inadequate, if the report comes back, so once we ask the question.
I think your case needs to be put to the council rather than the staff.
So my guess, my issue is, if we ask the question, therefore, and we get back an answer that says that something is inadequate, at that point, we have an obligation to do something about it. If we'd never asked the question, it would have been different, as often is the case. But now we know from the report that there is an issue, it's very hard for us not to do something about it in that case.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Can I just ask a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Graham? If council authorises the general manager to request Taz Network to look at the lighting, do they, do they make a judgement as well? I mean, they're not going to adhere to any request just because somebody asks. They're actually going to make an assessment themselves. They don't, so if you put an adequate case to Taz Network, they install it?
Buy the light, maintain it, supply the, and provide for the power to it, they don't undertake the audit.
Okay. So any request from council is always a by the by? No questions asked? Okay. So this report that encourages you to do that, backs up, is adequate backup to justify that light being reinstated after it was uninstated years ago? Thank you.
Can I just raise a point of order here? I'm not sure where we're at. Alderman Pearce, you mentioned, well, I am in the debate, but in terms of the argument, you mentioned that you've got indication of baffling being possible there to reduce the impact. Yeah. The recommendation doesn't, or before the chair at the moment, doesn't mention anything about baffling. Is that something that, that somebody wishes to amend the motion to?
Yes, I can.
Can, um, my trial. Yeah. What, that the?
Happy to.
Okay. So you're willing to take on all the fact that there is baffling there?
Yep.
And the second there as well?
Yes.
Sorry, I just wasn't sure where we got to on that.
I just, I really want to make sure the Alderman understood, because I don't know the other Aldermen in their female as well.
Okay. All right. With that amendment to the motion. Yeah, I'll come back, I'll come back in a second, but we, we need to have some words on, to amend that motion there to include the baffling, so.
In Hooky Street with appropriate baffling.
Okay. Alderman Douse, I think you were hoping to speak next?
Mr. Mayor, I draw your attention to item eight point two, says, residents' local locations given the benefit of each provider's safer community environment. Would that imply, because the light's not there, it's unsafe community environment, exactly where this light's supposed to go? So I want, I would know, have you got any figures on how many misadventures have occurred because of the lack of a light? No? The other thing is, is there an alternative pole or place we can put it on that can spread the light without having to be the light at this place? Because this light is going to create a huge amount of contention and rupture of years ago. And I've got, I had a phone call this morning from one of the, I don't know, antagonist or something. And I think it's just a relative or a neighbourhood brawl, and they're using us as a tool to resolve their issues to a certain extent. Or the other thing, so I'm rather sceptical of having a light there or not. And I want to know objectively, is there any safety reason why the lights you don't need it? And alternatives, there are no calls.
Well, we'll leave that to the mover to answer that question. I'll take it as something that we have already encompassed with Alderman Chong and her contribution to the debate. Any other speakers? Alderman Kusick, write a reply.
No.
Sorry, Alderman McFarlane.
Happy to do a write a reply. Happy to know this intersection really well. Having been down there a number of times on an evening, one of them was to support a family while the house was on fire. But on other occasions, I've had to drop off schoolchildren. That intersection is bounded by a very large public over space park area, which has got no light surrounded at all. It's also not far from the two bus stops where children get off and walk down those streets after sports activities. And in winter light now, six o'clock at night, it's dark, and they're still coming home from sport at seven. So there is a need for a light in that particular vicinity. Granted, there may be neighbours who don't want a light because it spills onto their property. However, I believe that people can afford blinds. So therefore, the community's benefit in having a light there outweighs the difficulties of people who can't afford blinds. In this context, I think that it may well be a long-term feud going on in the area, but that is not a consideration of tonight's decision. And it is the benefit of the safety of the community that we take on board. I particularly like the light spillage in my area. I raise the blinds of an evening, and I can walk through the whole house without having to turn on one light. So there are benefits to light spillage, as well as there might be difficulties. However, I manage my light spillage with my blinds. I think it's important, the recommendation.
So the motion before the chair is as in the agenda, plus the words appropriate baffling. All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. Moving on to governance, eleven point seven one, voluntary amalgamations proposed community consultation. Alderman Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move an alternate motion. A, that council approves the undertaking.
Has this been circulated?
No, it hasn't, sorry.
Okay. It doesn't have to be, but let's, let's see how.
It's in writing. I'll read, I'll read it out for, for the benefit of Alderman. So it's, A, that council approves the undertaking of community consultation in relation to voluntary amalgamation, using attachment one in the associated report as the basis for the consultation documentation. B, that the documentation be presented at the council workshop on Monday thirty first of July for further refinement prior to its release. C, that council approves direct mail act to residents as the preferred consultation methodology.
Have a second for that? Alderman McFarlane, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to explain the motion.
Look, let's, let's just take a moment to get a copy of this. Can we get a copy of this? It'll take, we're adjourned for just five minutes to ensure that everyone has a chance to get a copy of it and read it.
Enough place, no enough place.
Well, what this will do, yes, we do, but what this will do is, we'll be saying, we'll do it around a workshop rather than turn it by council.
No, well, we should.
No, 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 no. That's not, that's not what the motion says. The motion isn't, isn't coming back to us. What was being, what we thought we would do is, is defer for a week, defer to the next meeting to give us time to, to go through and then have it presented. But what this would do is to say, oh, this is the skeleton of it, and just, this is what we're going out with, or just tweak it at a workshop.
Particularly in the Western Shore stuff, yeah. No maps, no nothing. I thought there was a, I thought I had a comment in there though, saying to be completed or something. Yeah, no, there's still some detail to go in there. Yes, there's still, there's still some detail to go in there.
Chair, I wonder if we could just let everyone know we're getting underway against this?
I see. No, nobody, but enough. No. Because it's using.
Right. We almost got a forum at the same, so I think.
Option. No, it doesn't mean there's other options.
Re-convene the meeting, please. And do we have a second for Alderman Hume's motion? Yes, we did. Alderman McFarlane, thank you. So Alderman.
I retract that, Mr. Mayor, having read this now. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a second? No second? All right. Alderman Jones?
I'd like to move at the officer's recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a second for the officer's recommendation? All right. Are there any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there absolutely is.
Do we have a second?
Do you want to hear what that is? Do you want to hear what that is first?
Well, shortly circulated.
I, you won't need to, because it's pretty straightforward. Do we, listen, listen to the, that we defer consideration of this matter till the next council meeting. And I can tell you what, there are some really good reasons to do this.
Do we have a second? It's a procedural matter, you don't get to talk to it.
Is that right?
It's a procedural motion?
That's all right. Defer all the matter, yeah, it's a procedural matter.
Being a procedural motion, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we've got the numbers. Against? Motion is carried, deferred until our next meeting. Okay. Moving, moving on to, order please, order. Item twelve, item twelve, we've got twelve point one, two, three, there are no matters on notice. Twelve point four, questions without notice. Alderman Jones?
In the Kangaroo Bay report, which has been tabled this evening.
No, there's no Kangaroo Bay.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. In the...
Was that a priority set, Alderman James?
Yeah, in the Chinese delegation visit to China, which is incorporated in the report that was tabled this evening, there is mention amongst other things that, as part of the MOU, council will enter into discussions with not only Kangaroo Bay, but also for age care facilities within Clarence. So my question is, is that something that the current applicant who is actually going to develop, or the developer of the hotel and education facility, is that organisation going to proceed with a proposal for an age care facility within Clarence as, as was discussed at the China visit? And if so, when do we expect to see a development application in relation to that?
Well, my recollection, recollection of that was that it remained entirely aspirational, and as far as I know, there's no site or development even in mind or planned for at this stage in particular. A general manager doing one.
I'm not aware of anything.
So it was just an aspirational statement at this stage, as I understand it, unless other members of the delegation saw it differently. So that's where it's at.
Our second question is in relation to what would it take to reactivate a new Opossum Bay structure plan, given that there is a, so many zonings within the precinct of Spit Farm Road, and also in the vicinity of Trippwood Drive? In actual fact, there's village zone, et cetera, and so on. So what would it take for council to actually have a workshop on a revised Opossum Bay structure plan? And would it require a notice of motion, or would it require just finding the appropriate time at a workshop to include it?
Through you, Mr Mayor, either of those options, either of those options as outlined by Alderman James could bring the matter forward, but the previous structure plan, my recollection is, it was actually lapsed through a fluffing of time. It would need ultimately to be re-initiated by council again if they wanted to go down that path. In relation to a workshop, it could be either done by notice of motion or by merely being on the workshop agenda if that was the, that was the expression of interest from council.
Supplementary on that, would it not be a better means to have a workshop on it so that we could actually discuss it prior to putting up a notice of motion, which by the very nature would either have to seek a report or...
We're happy to put it on, I sense there's no urgency in this, that we're all picked up. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In relation to recent years, there's been some street scape activity. I think that Fly Street obviously comes to mind, but also the Franklin Street in Derwin Avenue section and a bit of Lincoln Street as well. In both cases, Fly Street is effectively the high street of Clarence, and certainly Franklin Street is a hive of activity. Is there any plans for potential upgrades or improvements around footpath and other activity of a similar scale for the Bell Reef key area? And I'm thinking, if you like, between Esplanade and Clarence Street, because that, there's a, there's a tiredness and inconsistency of an area that's got increasing foot traffic and utilisation, it's almost becoming the restaurant hub of the area.
Well, the answer is there are no plans at this stage. Alderman McFarlane?
See, I'm in golf course, is there any, has there been any movement or is there any action happening?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'm not aware of any immediate update or plans in relation to the proceeding with the development beyond what's already been done to date. No, nothing there. I am aware that Mr Burke's and the project manager are still out and about there, and I think I'm correct in saying he attended a session in relation to ferries last week at Hobart Council, but we'll try and find out and provide council with an update if we can.
Well, Alderman Von Berto has offered some information on this. Alderman McFarlane?
Two questions. Part one, when might the roads be blocked off in Claret and Bell now that cars have all been taken away?
We're going through Rossford, you know...
Given the consultation process, it might just go there on the fourth of August.
Yes, it's a statutory process we've got to go through.
And question two, it's, could we have a written response in response to one of the representatives tonight who commented about Kangaroo Bay, that perhaps the hospitality building is 20 metres high?
I had to talk to, write back to this again.
Yeah, but I would like something to, to the Alderman, and also giving us a comparison to other buildings in the area like the Clarence Street units and the new restaurants on Old Walk.
McFarlane?
Yes, thank you.
Two questions, Mr Mayor. Do we have any indication of when the synox is going to be received on getting rid of the ugly green shed at Kangaroo Bay, so we can get on with the development?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we're pursuing it on a, on a daily basis, and I'm just waiting on to take up a decision later.
And also, second question, looking at the Mercury article from last Thursday about the roundtable meeting on the ferries to which Alderman Von Berto just referred, I was wondering, what the, it's not clear from the article, and I wasn't aware of the meeting till after it was reported, but what, on what basis people were invited to the meeting, what the meeting was about, and what sense you get from the meeting about where, where that proposal meeting is at?
I attended the meeting.
Yep.
It was convened by Hobart City Council, who had resolved to hold a meeting with stakeholders on the possibility of ferries. It was attended by, I think, representatives of all the Riverside councils, and the minister hitting also was there. Also, yeah, also ferry operators and other stakeholders, that Robert Clifford was there, and I think he would be the one that's prompted Hobart City Council into holding the forum. In terms of outcomes, there will be a report going back to Hobart City Council, and I think that's about it.
Well, pocket statement, Mr Mayor. Apologies that an invitation wasn't extended to all Aldermen. I did actually ask if that could be the case, but they, well, I was told that they hadn't, I was told by Hobart they hadn't gone out on the basis that they had constraints both from...
The gold embossing machine was...
Probably the golden, no, I won't say that.
I actually had to ask the Lord Mayor whether having a meeting on ferries would be appropriate for the mayor of Clarence to be invited.
There were limitations, I was, when I rang to ask for that, I was told there were limitations, one, to what the consultant would work with on the basis of the programme he had mapped out, and two, limitations just in numbers of spaces available, so.
Anyway, Clive Water, Clivat Water actually facilitated the meeting.
Obviously something that we as a council have a, have a big interest in, that, yeah, we'd like to be apprised as to, as to the progress of this proposal when...
Actually, at the end of the meeting, I did, did suggest to, to the Lord Mayor and to Hobart City Council that when they consider any outcomes from the forum, that other councils fronting on the river might be interested in being involved in any further discussions. So, yeah, I've registered our interest. Sure, yeah.
We have had a forum, have we, the witness?
We haven't held a forum as such, we've just expressed an interest in, in ferry services being resumed as a council. Alderman Kusick?
I have two questions. Are you, as mayor or from your involvement with Elcat, aware of or have a copy of any financial modelling the minister has, or his staff provided in relation to funding TAS Water, given his stable borrow around $500 million, significantly increased TAS Water workforce, continued by dividends to councils until 2025, and cap charges to end users, which seems impossible? So does any financial modelling, are you aware that any financial modelling exists?
The only report I've seen into it is released last week, and that was the infrastructure Tasmania report.
And what's that, the financial modelling in that?
Well, if you're a professional financial modeler, you wouldn't have thought so. Has everyone got a copy of that, by the way? I think it was circulated. Yeah, okay.
And a second question, in relation to Rossney Park, State Park Security, do we have any security plans for that facility?
Through you, Mr Mayor.
We know what, how active the police are there.
We have been liaising quite regularly with the police in regard to security issues there, and we are in the process of installing some security, or security cameras there at the moment, so.
Alderman Douse?
Mr Mayor, Richmond Road, I think it's going to be done up to a certain extent, the entire line in that area, it's going to be wired and shut, but I just want to make this, these works are going to start because one of my competitors has fallen down, I can't wait to fix it up. They're going to take it away anyway. So why fix it up if they're going to take it away? I just want to back out and watch the time stand.
Well, there's not a conflict of interest here, I hope, Alderman Douse. I can see Mr Graham shaking his head, but...
Through you, Mr Mayor, it's a, it's a, it's a state, Palmer State growth project, we'll try and find out their timing and compare to...
Thank you. To Mr Graham, the lights are stuck on a little bit, I suppose, on the street. There are also traffic lights at the intersection, is there any timeframe, or do we think there's any timeframe? Yes, yes, is there any, any time you'd like to say what's purely up to the... Yeah, another question I've raised with you many times, and I keep getting complaints about this, parking at Kangaroo Bay near the sports, or near the playground or what, it seems to be, I'm told this by a customer, the customer asks, the customer has parked there from seven o'clock and it's still there at three, four o'clock now, and it's obviously, I'd imagine, a complete protection of buses down the park here. Are we either going to put a sign where there's free parking, or just put some time where you can actually park in those spots, because people are taking them up?
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I take that on notice? I just need to get some advice and have a look at that issue, I don't know the answer to that.
Good issue, thanks. Alderman Von Berto?
To our two remaining members of the public, council has to go into closed session now to deal with matters of confidence, so thank you very much for your attendance tonight. If I could have a motion to go into closed, Alderman Pierce second with Alderman Hume, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.